Well.
Taller than me. That looks pretty good. Yeah, yeah, actually, yes. Perfect.
You're on camera again, or there make sure you pointed at whoever's talking better. Okay.
Right.
Ready? All right, all the speaking orders start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
Back to this flag.
I took it. Did they take it in?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And no to their public, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Wow. Dan Jensen. Hassan. Professor.
Here.
Mark Harry.
Here.
Rest in fight.
Here.
White.
Here. Okay. Any changes or additions on the agenda?
Uh, I mean, I know I don't have the ability to have a change, but. China's the government agency to agency repurposing this question. Yeah. I thought she was gonna take it off, but. No, it's not. It's so it's not a change. We're just talking about what the issue was. And by it's not, okay. Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
I have none.
All right. Um, emotion?
Yeah, I'll move that we prove that.
It'll be on the consent.
No. Changes. Okay, um, how about a public comment? Do you have anybody that wants to add some input this evening?
We've got opening up public comment for both the Division twenty-two report and the cellphone.
Okay. Okay, seeing now we'll continue. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for? The approval of all items? Do we have any items that need to be pulled out to be discussed? Or are we good to go?
I didn't see anything.
No, I didn't either, so.
Motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
It been moved and seconded to preserve, approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. All right. Onto board discussion. Board committees, any further discussion? Um, I think last time we talked a little bit about. Members. Being involved in other committees such as the rural as a rural school board caucus. Um, the ag advisory committee. I don't know what others would come to mind, but. I think that the definitely the rural rural school board caucus would be a good one. Not sure who has the. Hand wave on that, but.
How often do they meet again?
I don't know.
You don't know.
I don't, um. I get something from them every once in a while in my emails, so they're pretty active. I would say that now, how often they have an official meeting, I couldn't tell you that. But I bet I get something a couple of times a week in my email from them.
Lane, do you have any input on that?
Yeah.
I I don't, Chairman Jensen, I think, um. I don't, I'm, yeah, I don't get anything as an A del or plus super tense, so I'm. I'm out of the loop on that, so sorry, I don't have any. I can ask Will and get it to you, but. Probably won't know right away.
That would be great. You could just email that to me, Lane, and I can get it up, members. Okay. And I don't know, uh, NLEF representative was kind of left. Open Policy Committee. I think those were the ones that I had typed up that you guys were kind of in discussion about.
Right.
But. Right, and, um. I mentioned at the last meeting that the foundation meets at least once a year, most often twice. Usually in somewhere between October and December and April. So we follow spring. Not very lengthy meetings and are more, but they are more active when we have a project for them to manage, then we get busier. Um, and the policy committee, you guys know how often that would be pretty much just when we have new batch of policies, so it's kind of hit and miss too, so. But not a huge time cabinet, I think.
Should we? Table until Dan's back and we can start to divvy up. Talk about who.
Yeah, there's a couple of options there. We could table it till Dan's back, or we could put Dan on those.
Sure, he would love that.
Yeah, right.
And you guys had all also discussed the possibility of a work session. Later on, if I don't know if that's still.
Yes.
Happen there too, and stuff.
Yeah, we've got that down further.
Or goals.
Yep.
Right.
Let's work on that.
And you're saying moves the committee discussion to that work session.
It to, yeah, the local part of the.
That's a good idea. And then we'd have a little more information.
Yep. You did motion of them? Just jot it down for.
I'm just gonna jot it down, so, yeah. Yeah. We don't need it.
Brilliant. Okay. Well, from there, then we'll continue on with some new business. Mr. Lane's threatened.
Thank you. Yep, hi, thank you, folks. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
And I just received a text from Will Cahill, the rural caucus meets monthly.
Okay. Thank you.
Where do they meet? Is it all online or?
I would assume it's Zoom because of everyone's rural location.
Thank you, Lane.
I will text that real quick and then I'll start with my report, but I'm pretty sure that it's via Zoom.
Okay, thank you, Lynn.
Yep, and another, just to note, while I have the floor. One, thank you for allowing me to to zoom in. I'm at a conference and I'm sorry about last month, I. I made it a priority to spend some time with my last kid that's in home. It's odd being a parent that's had kids forever. And then you realize all your last ones playing their last year of sports, so. Um, I was watching my daughter play volleyball last board meeting, so I apologize, but made it a priority. Um. The other deal is, uh, we started last month having our equity committee. And. You all have, I believe, I think, one member, um, and he communicated with. Margie Colas and said he couldn't make it for that meeting, but just wanted to let you know that. He has communicated and we have that going, so that's a a Division twenty-two and a service that we're doing and. And a brainchild that came out of Lake E S D that's working for us, so. Um, you do have a voice in a countywide that eventually goes statewide information. Um, with that saying in front of you, you have our M O U between Northlake School District and the E S D. Um, our four pillars, programs for children's special needs. That's our special ed services, um, school improvement, tech services, more of a hardware infrastructure. And then administrative program services supporting Gail and Cameron. Um, we provide a speech path, um, it's virtual. And then a speech para support, we pay for a part of a. Salary for a person to, um. Help get the kiddos to their speech sessions. Um, we have the school psych assessment. Um, Mr. Allison, we're able to hire him again this year, and that's been a blessing for us. Um, great resource for all of our school districts and our administrators. Very fortunate, uh, without Rex, we'd probably be in a, we'd be in a hard spot right now, and I think Gail would agree with that.
I would.
Um. Myself and Taylor help with some admin stuffs, uh, reports and any type of, uh, reporting. Needs to be had. Um, the R T A, there's a grant out there, they'll pay for technical assistance, which is a fancy word for professional development for sped. So anytime the districts need, uh, P D in certain areas, we'll support them with that. Sammy comes up. Once a week to, uh, assist and consult with autism. Our early childhood program is strong in your neck of the woods. Michael Benson drives up on Thursday. I believe he meets with seven families. He actually stays the night there in Christmas Valley. Thursday night, he meets with a couple more families and then drives to Paisley and meets with the family. Um, and that's where he does, they're called, um. Individual family plans, so it's like special education, but for non K twelve students. Again, the child fine, Mr. Benson supports them, and that's our students with special needs. The school improvement, uh, myself and mainly Amy Fortune supports administrators in Northlake on any school improvement. I think a lot of it is that response to intervention halfway down there, the R T I looking at data, helping teachers, um, move students, getting growth in education. I lost support too with any, um, new O D E mandates with education and school improvement. Our grand administrator this year is Margie Colas, um, we come up once a month to meet with Gail, and then, um, Margie also does. Emails a lot with Gail on the integrated grant programs. Flow through fun, flow through funding for an academic counselor for you guys. Um. Rose Anna Cahill does your character strong, and, uh, you guys, uh, provide. Point two five of her salary, and so do the other dis- small districts, write a little bit, and then the E S D provides point two five also. That's a new. Pass this year because of our funding shortfall. Um, we provide a librarian, every school district has to have a certified librarian, so, um, Ms. Fleming comes to your district at least once a year. Does quarterly reports, works with your librarian and your building principals. Same thing, Ms. Filberts helps with any type of medical plans that you would have for a five oh four I E P student, any type of professional development on. Um, the distribution of medication in schools and also helps with our, um. Oh, gosh darn it. I'm not reading this very well, sorry, um, immunization. Uh, have point two five of F T throughout all the districts for any chronic absenteeism. That's the Everyday Matters Grant. So if Gail or Cameron has a kiddo who has chronic active absenteeism, I can support them with Miss Grant. Um, trying to remove barriers to help a kiddo get back to school. We provide the network services, E rate support, which may not be there. Um, after this year, we'll see on the government cut down, it's a federal program. Then we also pay for the car solus, which is an online mental health care coordinator. That any student, staff, family member, board member. Has access to help them line up healthcare. Administrative programs, uh, the E S D monitors and supports homeschool students with their needs through the state laws. We can help with any additional grant writing outside of the integrated grant program, copy services. Um, the the brokerage for an audit, and we actually will go out and request for a new. Um, request for service, R F P, R F Q this year, and I just heard today that there's only like four companies in the whole state of Oregon that do school districts. So I'm hoping that, uh, when we go out for that new request, one, we. Get to keep the people we're using, and two, the cost doesn't go up, but I could see the cost going up. It's one of those supply and demand pieces. The school safety prevention support, even though we're not funded, um. Just a little bit on this, I'm still providing these services. Mr. Tag does some training, um, along with the threat assessment, and then Kylie and Rosanna on bullying behavior, suicide prevention. Uh, or F B As. Again, Ryan's the threat assessment coordinator. Um, I'm the attendance officer, still working on trying to write a new countywide ordinance. To help have a little bit more teeth, but that is, um, on hold with Oregon law. Ms. Colas is our new C, or, yeah, she is also our new C T liaison, she goes to quarterly C T A meetings. And Ben brings that information back to the high schools. And that's it. Um, if you have any questions, I'd like to answer them.
Is this cover the support we need, Gil?
This is the support we need, and I'm happy with the M O U. Everything that Lane, uh, mentioned is exactly what we use these people for, and in fact. Most of them I've already worked with this year on trainings or whatever services they provide. Use them all the time for exactly what he said.
Great, same package we did last year, right? Same thing.
Yeah, it worked well for us. Yeah, the only, uh. Uh, thing that's changed is we have a new speech person doing the same services, and then Margy Colas does the same thing that Mark Louie did, so. Um, and she's in touch with me all the time, about almost daily. She sends me up something, and that's very much appreciated, keeps me in the loop, and, um. Even the library lady has already been in touch with me this year. And Rosanna's coming up, Amy Fortune was here today, Miranda Filbert and I have been talking about when to get our. Medical trainings in, so yeah, all these people already rolling and. Helping to start out the new year, really great, so I have no changes, and I just recommend that you approve the M O U.
Do a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the M O U with the big county E S D as presented.
Same. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the M O U between Northlake School District fourteen and Lake County E S D. As presented, any further questions or discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Lane.
Thank you very much, folks, and I'm gonna buzz off and go to the Paisley School Board meeting, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stratton. Yep, we talking to you soon.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay. And now on to the twenty-four, twenty-five Division twenty-two standards.
Um, okay, so these, uh, are a. Pretty much exactly the same as what we had last year. We approved them last year, um, and I'm asking that you do the same this time. There are a couple of these, if you look at them that are on hold, they're listed there, but they're delayed until. Um, twenty twenty-seven, like mostly the, um, essential skills, wait through the end, till the end of the twenty-seven, twenty-eights, uh, school year, they're still listed here, but we're not using them just now. Uh, there are two of those having to do with essential skills, the rest of them, we are doing those. Um, and I would just, there isn't really anything any new or different on here than what we've been doing, so I would just ask that approve those. Um, as per normal.
Those wasn't waived, those are waived as a. The state legislatures waived them.
Yeah, um, when COVID hit, we stopped doing the, um, I'm gonna pass the smarter balance in order to get your diploma. Stop you doing the testing for years, stop doing essential skills. That's why, but they're gonna pick those back up into seven twenty-eight.
Nice, seems odd that you'd waive essential skills.
Yeah, no, we're still doing it, it's it's just the testing, and we're still taking the smarter balance test, it's just that. In the past, if you didn't pass smarter balance, you could take essential, a test on essential skills basically as an alternate. But they just said, never mind, we're not gonna mess with that right now, we don't have time, but we will pick that back up later, and that's what the schedule for that is.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
Uh, yeah, I move that we approve the Division twenty-two standards. As presented.
Second. Okay, then moved and seconded to approve the Division twenty-two standards for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion carries. Um, looks like we'll go to the Starlink backup internet option.
Mr. Johnson.
So. Prices for everything. You guys have also been interested in possibly devices for the buses, was that right, what I heard?
That was mentioned, yes.
Okay, but I included that info on here as well.
Thank you.
So when L S Networks had a fiber break, uh, beginning of the school year, we were down for like. Twelve plus hours, and there was nothing we could do until they rerouted us through, you know, another section of fiber. And so, uh, Bear and I looked, and we would be able to mount a Starlink setup, basically, right above here. And they offer, uh, minimum tier of service, fifty gigabyte bandwidth a month for sixty-five dollars. Um, and if we were going to install it, we could keep it at that lowest tier. While we're not needing it, um, if we were going to have an extended outage from our, from L S Networks, we can bump it up to what we need, but we can keep it at the minimum price. You know, don't eat it. And then the next month, you can bring it back down, they just prorate the amount for the month that we need. We generally use about. Four and a half to five and a half terabytes of data so far this year, that's what we've been doing each month. Uh, so. I don't expect we would have an outage for that long, uh, we need to cover that amount of data, uh, that would still allow us to have. Emergency contact and, you know, get phones out if we need it, or emails or anything like that. Um, as far as the hardware, as the one-time cost, uh. Performance model probably be, probably what we would need on the building, uh, offers the highest, uh. Uh, down and up speeds. Uh, currently, they're offering four hundred seventy-five megabit down, seventy-five megabit up, which is the down speed is higher than what we currently have with L S Network, so that would cover. Speeds enough for everyone to be on like they currently are. Uh, they offer the old por- performance model, but that one's slower than we have currently. As far as the buses, if we wanted to mount those on, they offer the mini dish, offers a hundred megabits per second. Um, and that would be more than enough for emergencies, if bus breaks down somewhere, we don't have cell service, so it would contact with the radio thing. Or on trips, things like that. Could also be used if we had, like, the events, uh, across country. That was at Port Rock, you know, you could use it there for internet services as well. And then there's the mount, there's a router that you would need for that, uh. And then the refract mounts, uh, you can either do permanent or one where you can take it down if you want to. Use it in multiple locations, or say, once the bus got there, take it with you to the field or something like that. Um. I don't know if we'd wanna do for all buses, but I put for a service for the school, like port buses, at the minimum, uh, bandwidth would be thirty-nine hundred dollars a year. And then for each bus would be five hundred sixty-six dollars, uh, for the hardware. And for the school rooftop hardware, all we need is the transceiver, and that's. Two thousand bucks. Yeah, if you have questions and.
If you were to, so that, I mean, the the mini for the. Like for the buses. You're pretty easy to move back and forth, like from one vehicle to another, right? Like, if you wanted to, like, I don't think we necessarily need them for our daily routes, but they could be nice for. Game trips, so have.
Yeah.
Have mounted.
Between whatever.
Man, that our activity bus.
Yeah, whatever vehicles, uh, you need it to be on, yeah, they, as they have the, uh. Mobility mount is the permanent one, but they also have to, when you get mounted to a bar or something like that, and it just comes off, you know? Uh. The other ones meant for like what roofing ceiling, if you were mounting it straight, you're in the roof, so yeah, we'd be able to do that. And the, uh, the router with it as well, because they, uh, they can either be plugged into wall power or DC twelve volt card.
Is it the just regular twelve volt to? Do you know how much amperage you would pull for?
Uh, it uses, the minis use, I think, max fifty watts. Power. Okay.
I think the ones I've looked into a little bit, they run like a cigarette that are, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just thinking, not fifty watts, over. For to write about five amps, which I think cigarette lighters are around ten amps.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe. Lots.
So if.
Okay.
So that would make it really easy to transfer between any of the vans, the Dodge pickup, if we want to take it to the, out that run. How many times has, uh? Have we had an outage at the school?
Uh. Not super common, and it has been very short, but when it, when it does go down. But that does take everything off online for us, that's. Big part, um. That breakage was because they had to travel out to a location and dig up, uh, cable way off off-road. Um, so that was why that one lasted, uh, so long, but other than that. Usually any downtime we've seen has been, you know, he's, he's here. Um, when I check our, uh. The unified machine that manages all our. Uh, but since that break, the only downtimes has been when I've been doing network at night, but, yeah.
But when we're down, we're down.
Yeah.
That's the thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I mean, that that's the one thing that we're.
Yeah, we have a couple of internal network resources that you can access on the network, I mean, storage drives and stuff like that, but as far as most of the teaching tools that. Uh, they use, there's, those all rely on an outside connection.
So, trying to two separate things, there's one for to start backup and then potentially. The travel stuff as well.
Yeah.
Um.
And you could, if, say we bought it and and didn't use it all year, it'd only be that sixty-five dollars a month?
Yes, correct, yeah, that's the lowest we can pay for a monthly service to have it just there. Um, if, and yeah, so that would cover, I'd say, you know, a day's outage, if we needed to say, oh, we're gonna be down for a day or two, or a few more, we could. Bump up to the next tier as we need, um. And say if that was the last few days of the month, they would just prorate us those three days, you know, so how much a month we use that next tier up? But, yeah, if we're not using it, uh, yeah, sixty-five bucks a month, it's the, it's the minimum rate.
So it's the startup cost, so.
Yeah, the initial hardware fee.
Which the, personally, the startup cost doesn't bother me. It's if you're, if you're having to pay five, six thousand a year, and you're not using it.
Right.
But if you're eight hundred dollars a year and you don't use it, that's pretty cheap insurance, my opinion.
And then if we. If we find that we're not using the hardware, or we're finding an alternative, you can resell the, uh, the equipment too.
Yeah. Uh. Yes, there, we're on Starlink, it's good service, and the internet's been fantastic. I would be a for it, I've, I, uh, I guess the question would be how many, if we were gonna do the mobile one as well, and if we're gonna do that, how many units we'd wanna do, or we wanted to start with one and. Try it? Or we have best some for? Get a couple?
I would think a couple. I just don't guess. If we move a GPS from a tractor, tractors quite often, it's a pain in the butt, here is if you're gonna. Break a connection or something, and then you're totally out. I just, uh. For that price, just have one of them, but. We can start with a couple.
Or four, whatever, you like, you recommended, or. How many, thank you.
I'd say for if we were to do trips, I'd say, uh, on those trip vehicles, they'll have ones for local or anything like that, I'd say three. Would be a very excellent starting point. Um, and that'd be pretty, you got a real long hard activity bus, and probably. Ones in one of the vans, and the other one for the speech, for whichever visual you totally have. That would be my startup okay.
Would it be wise to go like on the activity bus with a permanent? Mount beans, that's, that's a trip.
The van ones are easy, is there to have roof racks on?
They do not have roof racks on, but, uh, I think magnetics will be good, they've got a whole lot of good excellent magnet technology right now, that is, they're sold.
Yeah, I'm sure there's plenty of aftermarket for them too, they could use. Yeah. You know, this have to use Starlink's mount.
Are the roofs on the vans steel? Okay. We need a vote? Yeah, we need a motion to.
There's only three or four. Obsoles. Just doing what's presented.
Just do what was presented. What was previous or?
Yeah, where it says service for the school or buses, be three, three hundred dollars a year.
Is it, so it's sixty-five a month per device? So sixty-five for the school and the sixty-five for each unit?
Yes, yeah. Service.
Gotcha.
Then, yeah, if we needed to, you could pick which one you can even order bandwidth. So that way keeps it kind of separate.
Gotcha. It's, it's a selfie.
So we could basically try it out at the lowest level of service possible at the school and for buses and the total cost for all that, everything would be thirty-nine hundred bucks.
That was.
Saying?
Service.
A service plan.
Okay.
Let's start.
All the hardware. I gotta look at the hardware too, right?
It's like that would be about eighty-two hundred, eighty-one fifty. For your, the body of hardware plus the service.
Yeah, two thousand five sixty-six per month.
Gotcha. I'm looking at, I was looking at that wrong. Okay, yeah, each bus.
Just talking about the E rate. The, the, if it goes away, the like ESD will probably pay for it.
You know what that is per month service? Sorry?
No, because they pay, I'm not with expensive.
Yeah.
So if we signed up for it now, it'd go like a year, a year from now from the state?
As far as I'd say, it doesn't require commitment to.
It go free, okay?
Yeah, they're months, so they might not, or if you can I don't know, on the business side, on the personal side right now, if you sign up when your contract, they significantly discount the hardware.
Okay.
But they might not do that on the business side.
I sent them an email to the business, you know, help asking for information back.
Well, I was just looking at their word says service to the school and for buses be thirty-nine hundred dollars a year. So I just wondered if you had to commit to that much and whatever. So, yeah. So we're talking eighty-one fifty for the school and for buses per year, basically.
We just think, yeah. Do it. Or three. Yeah.
I, I go for it.
All right, I remember we approved the purchase of the Starlink backup internet service as well as the mobile internet service as presented. Second. It been moved to second to approve the purchase of the Starlink backup internet service for the school and for mobile? Any further questions or discussion? All those big motion carries. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you. If you hear anything back about the email that you said you sent, I see you kind of discounted or changed the price or anything. All right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to action items. Let's see, we've approved the Lake MOU.
We did that, I guess.
We'll move into the roofing project manager.
All right, I, I sound like I'm reading hints, but I am. I'd like to hire Chris McKay from H K as a project manager for the twenty twenty-three roof project. They're estimating a not-to-receive fee of twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars. These structures based on time and effort, they, they come involved. Sorry, invoicing monthly for actual hours of work. Keep us fully informed, so provide these on time tracking key, outline the hours and effort dedicated to the project management. They're currently seeking proposal for written consultants. So if we choose to move forward with them and just start designing immediately, some more good more.
Was there any other interest?
No, we didn't necessarily reach out though to anybody because it fell under the the, was it the government? You didn't have to reach out to see if it was like a hundred thousand or.
Okay. We have experience with these guys. We've worked with them in the past.
You guys have worked with what? The ESD for last several years. We met with Chris. He was the one that dealt with us on the original, we haven't come out, we have people in the valley. We could continue with some people, but what was his name, Gil, that we did? Mike Killer?
Yeah.
Doug, Doug Killer.
Mike Killer.
Yeah. They all seem to go monthly. We could, so if we want it done in August, we don't really have the time to to postpone any longer. By the time we got back to to Chris, he was already wanting to reach out for others. He reached out to other people, the Griffin themselves to have, to have. They, we, we wanted a deadline basically, we want to be done by September next. And he thinks that is doable, but we have to start now.
So, so we have a little bit of experience with him, about, of knowledge about what he does. But not anything specific. I'll answer that too, or speak to that. But what Barry and I have appreciated about him is that he's real responsive. He's willing to come here. He has come here and looked at it already. In fact, he made some comments, didn't he Barry, about things we could do instead. I didn't get the feeling he was looking to get hired. I put it that way. He was, it was very honest with Barry when he first came around.
Their company, H of Go. So trains for state of the market.
Right, right. So, so we just know a little bit about him and you've talked with them. Barry was impressed with them and I kind of liked how he did business with Barry.
They were the only ones that could actually find someone to come out and look at our we tried for about a month and a half and couldn't even get a phone caller to spell back. We reached out to Chris and he called me within twenty minutes of me emailing him and they had somebody on site two weeks. And we spent a month and a half.
And that's always an issue for us, seem to get people to come out here. So because we, yeah, we don't have to get bids on finding a project manager, we just have to find somebody we like. So far, we like this guy. But like Barry said, he is, we needed your approval on the amount, so we put the amount there. And so that's what we need you guys to vote on, make sure that that's okay, that we spend that amount of money on that service. And then he'll go to work looking. In fact, he already is looking because he just felt a sense of urgency to find somebody to come out here on our timeline and also before costs went up. We could get someone located and, and locked into the job. That would be to our benefit. And then Barry, anything you want to say about the other rates or the cost in general, expense sheets?
I didn't print any of that, Gil.
Oh, that, you did that, Monica?
The third page has the.
The third, any of this? Oh, it was with my thing. Yeah, we, but we know that the, that the total cost is, is gonna push a million dollars. It may not go that high, but it's, it's gonna be close to that. So you're figuring all the costs. So I think that's one reason why he was wanting to get going on it. So before costs went up even higher than that, because that's a lot. So anyway, and that we don't need to rid out that yet. What Barry needs you to do is if you're in agreement to approve spending the twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-one on Chris McKay and have him work as our project manager for this.
He does know we're not in the city of Newburgh, right?
Yeah, I, I questioned that also. I haven't talked to him about that yet, but yeah, but you're
I see that.
Yeah, I'm down at the bottom.
I got it.
That's good for five percent anyway.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe that's.
Yeah. He's, yeah, he's from Redmond, so that's pretty.
Yeah.
We have a motion for, or discussion.
Seems pretty steep, but I suppose that's what it is.
Yeah. Would be interesting to see what Mike being our experience with Mike Tiller in the past, what he had on it.
He's got his own business now, you know, he's not doing that same to me, so.
I don't know what's normal for this, this is. When you think about it, I was like like the general contractor essentially for the project, most general contractors that are building a house for you are probably going to be in the fourteen to sixteen percent range. So if you substantially under that.
Yeah, we're just putting a reference. It's not rocking.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be a million dollars, but it's a different day than we live in now. So, yeah, it's probably probably the right thing to do.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to use higher secure HMK company for the project manager for the roof project.
I'll second that.
Okay, been moved to second to hire the HMK company for the project management of the upcoming re-roof of the school. And further comments or questions? All of those in favor? Actually, I did have one. I mean, it's time to impact my vote. Will he be the one that takes on looking into the warranty situation for our current roof? Well.
I was. There was a warranty.
Was fifteen. What we talked about wasn't, wasn't in two thousand and ten? Seemed like it was fifteen.
That was worth it.
They charged us half price, so my guess was they came up and fixed something. Something from there we're doing, but I don't know.
Very clear. And when I talked to Gary, my understanding from Gary was that they came out to fix something that was damaged before, like that was actually work, he worked for previous work at school. Because he couldn't, he couldn't remember the exact name of the people that hit it with the clothes, because Monica found the bill. It made sense. But Gary told me that was, he had to call and get one to come out to look. It was worth it. Already done. But I don't know. I want to hear that. I'm just going off with Gary.
And, and Gary wasn't here either. That's the problem.
Right.
Said it was a couple of years after he started working here. There was an issue somewhere on the roof. He went up there, he dropped the paperwork, called the company, they came out and looked. And they warranty part of their work.
Because the roof, I mean, it's not the same as the gym. The gym's original, the rest of it doesn't match. It freed down at some point.
Yeah, yeah. And when they, when H K was looking back, they said, one of the only, they couldn't find that anything ever could done. So they questioned as to whether or not we even had a permit to do it. And that I, I couldn't tell you either. They couldn't find any record of what ever being done. They could find the new addition, all that stuff, could never find it for. And when he searched the company that did do the work, it comes out that they're residential. Commercial for.
Gotcha. All interesting.
It is interesting.
Okay, this, we're good.
Okay.
All right. I'm gonna guess we don't have a budget or do we have a budget or? H thirty, there is.
Yeah, H three. The HMK page was page one and the last.
We don't need to address that piece of it yet.
It's just for your information. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Just trying to keep you posted on what's going on.
All right. Cell phone policy.
Okay. Cell phone policy is what it is. I hadn't made any changes in it. We've been using it since we talked about it last. Most of the kids are doing pretty well with it. We have a few that are having a hard time giving up their phones, but most of them are doing okay. And, but the teachers are being very consistent in writing them up. So I think we're consistently applying the new rule and Mr. Flash has been dealing with a lot of that. Mr. Mitchum's son, the office a little bit, we've had a few phones in there. So we're just following our procedures and going right on through it. So at this point in time, I don't have any suggestions for change. I think what we have there is working just fine. I think it's fair. And I think we stick with it. So I would just suggest, and we can do these all at once if you want to. As far as approve the second reading of the, an adoption board policies from August, because that cell phone policy is part of that batch. So you can just do them all together. And I don't have any recommendations for change in any of the other policies either. This is our second reading. We've already been through them a couple of times actually. And I have no suggestions for change for any of them. So my recommendation to you is if you're okay with it, just pass them all. Whole tire on August twenty twenty-five batch with no other changes unless you have questions about them.
What's the wish?
Yeah, we're pretty close. I don't have an opinion.
Most of it was stuff that we already have on file that was minor minor changes.
But a few deletions where they combined policies, reduced redundancies, things like that. Nothing completely impactful one way or the other, in my opinion.
So that seems like somebody at state legislature spent a lot of time adjusting for. Slow month at the office. So.
Mark, what are they saying? Say your problem. Yeah, we'll move that we approved the second reading, adoption board policies from August twenty twenty-five, including cellphone policy.
Okay, been moved to second to approve the second reading and adoption of the board policies from August twenty twenty-five, including the cellphone policy. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you. Continue on with that.
Moving on to reports.
Mr. Black, you're up.
All right. Yeah, this last week, we hosted the Skate of the Rock Cross Country Meet. Went well. You know, we had a lot of help up there, so we didn't have a lot of teams. So the one thing we're looking at moving it up in, in September, I think we got a weekend. Do it on a Saturday, try to get more teams out there because that's a a beautiful venue right there running on the inside of that rock. So tough race. So it's kind of consensus for the coaches, they'd much rather have the tougher races earlier in the year rather than late, later in the season, because they're kind of chasing times later in the season, trying to get their times for going into district and stage. So that's kind of what we're looking at with, with Skate Rock. Yeah. Lot, a lot of positives there. And then Saturday, we hosted the volleyball tournament. And that was, we had eight teams here, very competitive teams. And I heard that the good stuff on, you know, the referees really liked it and the way it was formatted and they're hanging the coaches, they, they, they were very, very happy with it. So so, yeah, so we had that. We're kind of getting down to the end of the regular season, wanting to to, to playoff mode. And so we'll see what happens over the next week, week and a half. But yeah, like hopefully they're the top of the league right now. Football's sitting third right now, but they got a big game next week against Elton. And then, so yeah, fall sports are doing well, winter sports. So I had a meeting, basketball meeting, trying to figure out what kind of interest we're gonna have boys basketball. And we had, we had nine come to the meeting. And I said And I said, if we're gonna make this work, it needs to be. We need to have these eight fully committed. Um for the whole season, be in there, making sure they're getting their grades up. They were. They're all. You know, and it grants that they wanted, wanted it to happen, wanted that to have a season. Um so I said, okay, we'll go out, try and find a coach, so that's the biggest thing right now is trying to find basketball. Um. So. Tell that for the kids, I do my best, but um that's kind of where we're at, we're kind of winding down, you know, as far as we don't have much time and try to find a coach, but. So we do have nine boys that are that are in that are interested in playing one half a season. So that's kind of, kind of where we're at, winter sports. We did hire a middle school boys basketball Shane Foreman. So we hired him as our middle school boys basketball coach, so. He's excited about getting going and he'll start here in January November. Once once junior high football's over, he'll be going. So. Other than that, I don't think I have too much athletic.
And any of the other coaches?
That are, uh so we have the track position still open, um. You know, we haven't, I haven't started doing the interviewing on that, but yeah, that that head head track position's still. So. And that's, I think, the only one we have, and and the assistant boys basketball too, so both both basketball positions are open for the high school. So if you have one coach, we'll. Find another, but. So that's, yeah, that's our big, the biggest hiccup right now is boys basketball.
We have a full. Cause the team's not gonna be real strong this year, we currently have a full.
We have a full twenty-four. Full schedule. A couple tournaments, so. That's the thing, as I told, I gotta have a a an answer when we have our our league meeting, which is um. Next Friday, uh we host. Uh the playoffs here, we're gonna have our A D meeting, and I told told him I'm gonna have an answer when we're the other team, so. Hopefully we have something, at least some of it's that's interested in. Taking that on, otherwise I'm probably gonna have to pull. For sure. And once you, once you drop the score, it's it's gonna get back, so. So I'm such the one to do, so. Hopefully, if you guys get the word out, that's interesting, and somebody wants a coach and. Send him my way.
Hey.
All right, uh September twenty-fourth, we had an open house, that was well attended, considering the the farming schedule for the year, we had a lot of people still out. Trying to get stuff done and fighting the rain, and on that, we had freshman class meetings and our senior class meetings, kind of going over the expectations for the year. So coming up for the. Uh October twenty-ninth, week of October twenty-ninth, we had our homecoming activities, finished up the homecoming football game and dance on the fourth. All events were that we had were well attended. And pretty positive. Um October second, Mister Herndon and I took the middle school kids to the, on a career connected field trip sponsored by the uh High Desert STEM Hub. We visited Keith Man- Manufacturing and Address and the Basics in Redmond, and those were pretty cool, the kids really enjoyed both of those. Uh. Both local companies that are based here, you know, in central Oregon, do a lot of the manufacturing, almost all of their manufacturing in-house. So it's, you know, like Keith is worldwide. So that's pretty cool that they started their mattress and have maintained their home base there. Um Mrs. Baker's been taking kids out for some different field trips, the juniors and seniors, getting them. Exposed to different college campuses and stuff and that, and different speakers during senior experience. October eighth was a busy day, we had picture day, and then Civic Crest also came down and did the the buy to reality where they do budget simulations. It's a computer-based program, it it gives them a a job and a scenario, you're making X amount of dollars, you're married, you have a kid or whatever, and then they've got to. Rotate through nine stations by their housing furniture, you know, based on what their credit score is or their income that. You can't buy or you can't buy. And then they gotta, if they have overspent, they've got to go to the back of the credit union and either get a line of credit or. They'll return some things if they were, you know, shocked, too fancy, so it's, and this is the second time we've done that, that was a, so a pretty good event as well. Um FFA is getting into full swing with their competition schedules with district soils on the fifteenth. We've got conferences coming up on October twenty-second, twenty-third, uh both will be half days, and that's new for us this year, they were K twelve all on the same time. Uh elementary ones will be scheduled. Uh and seven twelve, they'll start with their. D N F students and or behavior students contacting them first, working with the elementary if they have siblings, so they can coordinate those. Uh October twenty-ninth, we have the sophomores taking the P S A T. And our seniors taking the S A T and any interested juniors, probably the second day that, or second time that we've had that during the school day. And we'll. Basically have close to a hundred percent participation unless a kid's absent. Um starting to get, hopefully getting the word out this week for Veterans Day Assembly, which will be November sixth, that's the Thursday prior. Um with late start, we wouldn't be able to do it on Monday, throws our schedule off as far as breakfast and all that. It's about it, busy couple, busy months.
Thank you, Cameron, um as for me, I just have a couple of things I want to mention, the first one is the legislative update from. OSA and the state kind of a um budget and financial outlook, at this time. There still really is no significant news, it's just all about. Potential cuts, not anything. Significant or uh defined or identified yet. Um today was at the federal level, the biggest. Grant funds that we use are so far fully funded or nearly fully funded, like I D E A, the school lunch program, title one and other title programs, the ones we use are mostly fully funded, so I'm.